We have all the council members. That case, it is now five o'clock. I'm going to call this special meeting of the city of Livermore open pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order. Members of the city council staff need participate in this meeting via teleconference. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carling?
Here.
Councilmember Coomer?
Here.
Councilmember Monroe?
Here.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Here.
Mayor Marshon?
Very good. Yes, I'm here. Excellent. Got the full house here. Great. So we have a special meeting consent calendar. Tonight, instead of only one opportunity to address the council regarding items on the agenda, there will be two separate opportunities. During the public comment period, you may submit one comment per item. Because of the nature, we ask that they be no more than 500 words. If you submit multiple comments for a single item, the last comment will be read into the record and the remaining comments will be provided to the council after the meeting. The public comment period closes at the conclusion of the clerk reading the comments received. Comments be submitted using either YouTube or the question and answer portion of Zoom. When submitting public comment, please include the item number at the beginning of your post. So with that, we're going into the consent calendar. These are items that are typically of routine nature and they're typically passed in a single motion. However, I do understand we have several comments tonight on the consent calendar. So it asks that those be read into the record. The city clerk? Ms. Weber?
Yes, we have three items that were sent in by email for item 2.02. The first is by Mr. Montario. Hello, I am supportive of the East Corridor study, but I am worried about the time it will take for a solution to be implemented. The section of East Avenue between South Livermore Avenue and Madison Avenue is a nightmare for cyclists to navigate. Drivers are often unaware that the road is meant to be shared with cyclists and on many occasions I had belligerent drivers yell at me and get into the parking lane. It is clear that many drivers do not understand that the parking lane is not a bike lane and being in the parking lane would require weaving in and out of traffic to avoid occasional parked cars. I have avoided this section of East Avenue and instead commute to work by going through the winding residential streets. For this reason, I propose a charrow, see attached image. A picture was included of a painted green stripe bike lane. So I propose a charrow, a painted strip of green on the right side lane in order to communicate to drivers that cyclists have the right to be in the road. This is a quick solution that won't require any changes to be to the existing setup, but it would go a long way in communicating to drivers that cyclists have the right to be in the lane. I also believe it would demonstrate the true cost of the free parking along East Avenue. The next was from Caroline W. In the interim between the study of the road, between when the study of the road commences and the recommendations are implemented, a serious safety concern will persist on East Avenue with regard to members of our community who commute on non-electrified bikes. Would the council consider painting a bike lane or increasing signage that bikes share the right lane as the current expectation of the traffic flow is that bikers use the parking lane, which is extremely dangerous? The third comment is from Mary Perner. Hers is regarding East Avenue safety concerns. Pedestrian crossings. Parked cars adjacent to pedestrian crossings make pedestrians, especially youth, less visible to drivers, specifically drivers attempting to get through a light, a light change running the yellow light. This is definitely the case at the East Avenue Dolores Crossing, crossing from north to south. I am an inch shorter than my 11-year-old grandson and I am not immediately visible behind a parked vehicle, especially a pickup or an SUV. Twice I have entered the crosswalk with the pedestrian signal and narrowly avoided being hit by drivers rushing through the lane. This would be a fine place for a bulbout. The Jensen East Avenue Crossing on the south side of the street has a flashing pedestrian signal, but drivers in a hurry are still a problem at that crossing, especially crossing from south to north. Mornings and mid-afternoons, the crossings at Hillcrest receive a lot of foot traffic from East Avenue Middle School. There are crossing guards, but they are not always heated. Cycling there this morning, I saw no curb markings to restrict parking on the south side of East Avenue at Hillcrest, suggesting there may be less pedestrian visibility on the southwest corner. Solutions might include red curb paint and bulbouts where safety suggests. Her next bullet is speed. Beach Avenue is a major arterial. I have lived within view of East Avenue for over 15 years. During that time, the volume and speed of traffic has increased greatly for reasons well-known to the city. Bottlenecks on 580, increased population in Livermore and adjacent cities, et cetera. Commuters from many areas are finding ways to bypass as much of 580 as possible and East Avenue is a favorite route. This creates all sorts of issues for those who live nearby, including noise pollution, probable air pollution, and safety issues for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. Speeding is a major issue, particularly during commute hours. Drivers regularly ignore posted limits. They become impatient with other drivers who attempt to observe speed limits. Anything the city can do to reduce the volume and speed of traffic on East Avenue would be, would be good. Enforcement. Police traffic enforcement does not occur on East Avenue. However, I tend to see them out mid-morning during low-volume traffic. The enforcement needs to happen during morning and late afternoon rush, and I do mean rush hour. More speed limit signs possibly painted large and often on the streets themselves. Electronic enforcement system. The next topic is bicycle safety. East Avenue desperately needs more bike lanes. Currently, bike lanes extended from Vasco Road to Jefferson Street, from Jefferson to Livermore Avenue without designated lanes, cyclists are at risk. This is particularly true for students at Jackson School, East Avenue School, and Livermore High School. As cautious cyclists, as a cautious cyclist, I am forced to the sidewalk on that stretch of East Avenue and must share the sidewalk with pedestrians on low-hanging branches. Still, it's safer than the street. Livermore is constantly working to accommodate drivers, constructing costly parking areas, and planning auto access to downtown. Reorientation of priorities to encourage safe cycling, especially for youth and families, would be a way to reduce traffic and expensive car accommodation costs. Safe cycling and walking provide community health benefits. Bicycle safety is a social justice issue. Cars and car costs are expensive. Some of us cannot afford cars. I am also acquainted with families that can only afford one car. One carless parent will cycle with his or her children to and from school or on errands in all weather. Social justice. The next topic is lighting. East Avenue can be dark at night. Current lighting there has advantages of economy, aesthetics, allows the night sky to be more visible, and environment protection, providing better night conditions for area birds, but improvements are still needed. Tree branches, tree branches need to be trimmed away from some lights. Trees provide many community benefits and must be preserved, but there are a number of light situations that can be improved by trimming. There are no lights at all on the south side of East Avenue occupied by St. Michael Cemetery, a particularly dark area. To the east of the cemetery, East Avenue's school parking lot lights are expected to light the avenue too. Unfortunately, they are setback from the street, providing inadequate light for the East Avenue. Between the cemetery and the middle school, a long stretch of East Avenue's south side is relatively dark. And her final topic, connecting streets. Although this study's focus is East Avenue, I am aware of a related issue affected by East Avenue traffic. Estates Street feeding off of, feeding north, I'm sorry. Estates Street feeding off north of East Avenue has become a high-speed throwaway. Friends on Estates and Princeton complain of drivers turning off the avenue onto Estates at high speeds and continue down Estates at high rates of speed. I sometimes pet sit for this family and have seen many speeders there myself. Estates is a relatively wide residential street, which may invite this behavior. Recently, more children have moved into this neighborhood. Middle school students walk to and from school along Estates. Speeding is unsafe here because Estates is affected by East Avenue traffic. I hope the study will take this under consideration. Estates is in serious need of speed bumps. I've also received some question and answer comments. The first is from Stephen Dunbar. Thanks for the lighting study. Global Designing Cities Initiative, Dark Sky, and ROSPA all have good guidelines. New RRFB design in the MTC presentations also worth looking into. Krill Tri Valley and BEV staff on TAC. Wheels Accessibility Advisory Committee should be someone reached out to within LAPTAL also. Del Valle High School should also be a safe routes input school. Parking survey should specifically study driveway and garage utilization if available to a user. Staff should be flexible to try, to actually try out the alternatives with temporary design when possible to also get feedback. Concept alternatives should identify that pedestrian and bike users may shift to public transit mode if convenient to do so when identifying bus stop designs and access routes. Community workshops should be online now. Hope you're all ready for that. Eight months, not bad. Let's get it done. Mark Elgood? Oh, I'm sorry. His comment is for 2.05.
Okay, I see that there's a Jessica Flores has raised her hand. Do you have access to, to that?
Unfortunately, attendees cannot participate vocally. They would need to submit a Q and A.
Okay, send a Q and A through, that would be through the Zoom app?
Through Zoom, or they could put in a chat comment on YouTube.
Okay. So I said, I see Jessica Flores has raised her hand, but if you could submit it through the Q and A component, that would be helpful.
And then I have received a second, another public comment from Mark Elgood for item 2.05.
All right. Please read that.
As an advocate for Livermore commuter recreational cycling community, I request more attention to cyclist safety improvements and the planning for the 2021 major street resurfacing, striping projects, including planned reviews with local cycling advocacy/safety groups. This should include consideration of use on a street green bike lane segments at major intersection as worked so effectively in other cities. Please report back on this.
Okay. All right, I still see Jessica Flores has her hand raised. Jessica, if you can hear me, please submit your questions through the Q and A app of the Zoom. She's lowered her hand. Do you see anything coming in?
I do not.
Okay. Well, let's see. Is there anything that anyone wishes to pull for discussion on the consent calendar?
I just wanted to ask if any of the recommendations or suggestions made by the first three folks, are any of those ones that we could implement prior to the end of the study, which is, I think, eight months long, as I remember reading? Maybe the city manager can offer, or Paul Spence can offer answer to that?
So the bulk of the contacts, good evening. My name's Mark Roberts. I'm your city manager. The bulk of the comments that we received there would be something that would be a part of the study, especially those dealing with essentially the larger scale improvements, dealing with signage, lighting, bulbouts, and other changes to the street geometry. I'm going to have my community development director, Paul Spence, and perhaps our city engineer, Sherry Sheets, reply to the question that had to do with the painting in the street of the share the lane icon that is used to signal that bikers essentially are permitted, as of course is part of the vehicle code, but reminding drivers that they're permitted in essentially the right-hand travel lane. So Paul or Sherry?
Well, this is Paul. I think the majority of, of the improvements we would consider through the study, and it's possible as we go through that process that we might look at temporary installations to, to test their effectiveness. But Sherry, do you have particular comments on that one specific item?
Yeah, this is Sherry, your city engineer. Both the charrow and the red curb are potential items that we could do as a quicker interim looksee. Everything else would be a part of the major study.
Yeah, thanks. I was, yeah, I was particularly interested in the painting, the green striping, as well as the red curb, if that was something that we could do in the interim while we're, while the study is being undertaken.
And that's called a charrow, and we can look at it. There are regulations with respect to what type of street and where it gets located. So we can look into that and possibly do that as an interim.
Great, thank you.
I, I wanted to just appreciate the comments from the public on ways to proceed. I mean, it sounds like the outreach process has already started and the fact that we're actually, you know, that we're doing this, it's really nice to see city business that's not related to shelter in place taking place and watching this that started in 2018 and then was moved up in 2019 come forward. It's a real pleasure.
Well, again, I certainly appreciate the, the comments from the public because these are people that ride this every day. And certainly I appreciate the fact that this is what they're living and it's certainly a different perspective of what I have. So I do appreciate their comments and certainly encourage these to be considered during the study. Any other questions or comments? With regards to 2.04, the demolition of the airport terminal building and also the demo of the Bay Area building, I take it these, the Bay Area building is leases on hold until after the shelter in place?
Sherry, do you want to give a response to that?
Sure. We actually are allowed to demo the building because there's hazardous materials within the building that we would like to eliminate for our public safety reasons. So that is a project that we are intending to proceed with.
Okay, very good then. Thank you. That was, and then with the, I noticed that the decorative wall replacement along Holmes has stalled. Is that also because of the shelter in place?
The wall stalled because of the rainy weather. We had dug the piers for the fence and they got saturated and were no longer acceptable for, we had to dry them out and before we could proceed. But the project is deemed essential because of the public safety issue and the retaining wall necessary to hold the private property away from the sidewalk. So it will be continuing now that we're getting some dry weather.
Okay, great. Very good. I noticed that the SB1 funds for 2.05, that's, those SB1 funds also measure B and for 2021, measure BB funds are also part of that as well. So very good. Okay, is, if there's no further discussion? Oh, lastly, on 2006, or two, I'm sorry, 2.06, the federal and state disaster assistance, that that is not for this disaster, that's for a previous disaster, that's 2017?
That is correct. The original declaration was in 2017. The declaration is good for a period of three years. You are coming up on the expiration of the date of that, but the handy thing about that designation is they will actually allow the city manager to act as the city's agent for federal and state disaster assistance for any new disaster, including this disaster that happens during the next three years.
Okay, very good then. Okay, with that, if there's no further questions or comments, I entertain a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, move by councilmember Monroe. And who was the second on that?
Bob Warner.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We have to, roll call, don't we? Lead roll call?
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Aye.
Mayor Marshon?
Aye. Very good. Thank you. Moving on to matters for consideration, these are three resolutions ratifying the directive of emergency services, emergency orders. This is the second opportunity for the public to address the council. This is going to be on the resolution for the declaration of the emergency services. Oh, I can, I can just hand this off to, let's see, just a moment, I'm sorry. See clerk, Ms. Weber, do we have any comment cards for this matters of consideration?
We do not.
Okay, with that case, since there's no matters of consideration comments, I will hand this off to the city manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I am your city manager, Mark Roberts. I wanted to give you a brief overview of the environment in which the various proclamations were made in order that you have a little bit of context as we put these particular proclamations in context of the other actions that the city is simultaneously taking. We have a number of overall projects that your city staff is working on. At the very basic level, all of the folks who are providing essential services to the community, including your police and fire, water and sewer, essential maintenance of items to make sure that things still work, those folks are on the job. Generally, their work has been changed so that we have more redundancy, so that if we do ultimately lose personnel in any of those particular functions, we have additional folks who are on standby that can take their place. So we are down to accomplishing essentially very minimal staffing in a number of areas. Our police department has changed their shift structure to provide isolation between the two shifts that are out in the field and to provide some redundancy of staff should we have any illnesses or other folks that can't report to work for any reason. So at the very fundamental level, your, your city has reworked its way of doing business so that the staff here can continue to provide those essential services. All other functions within the city are either on a virtual basis or through email, telephone, text, and other means. So there is a lot of work being done. The folks who are working to make sure that bills are getting paid, invoices are going out, that our budget is being worked on. Folks in our community development department are working on a variety of things from home remotely, doing analysis, staff reports, and other items. Your public works staff are out in the field, taking care of essential items as we try to keep plant material and other areas both alive and areas for pedestrians and other users safe. So you do see some maintenance personnel out in the street for the city, but at a much lower level than what we would be traditionally be doing. And that's just to make sure that the material is still there and alive, that we've repaired things that are broken, that items that are hazards are taken care of. We, of course, are operating in our emergency operations center mode as well, and that means that we are coordinating through our area operations, which is our county, up through our state, to acquire resources, things like masks, gloves, and other material that we are either asking for, for our own first responders or on behalf of other providers in the community, whether they be medical or essentially working with our more vulnerable communities out in the city. We are working to make sure that materials flow in the right direction effectively and efficiently. We are working with Stanford Valley Care. They have, last week, they expanded their testing to include a special set aside for first responders who could essentially utilize testing now in the Tri Valley based on a confirmed exposure to COVID-19 rather than the traditional processes the rest of us have to use of getting a doctor's note and referral to have testing done. So that's a great leap forward for us here in the Tri Valley. In addition, the cities of Livermore, Pleasantville, and Dublin are working together to, with Stanford Valley Care, to set up a testing facility at the Alameda County Fairgrounds, and Alameda County Fairgrounds in the county are participating in that as well. And that would provide testing both for those that have a doctor's referral, and it would also provide medical screening and testing to those who meet the criteria for testing, which generally is a fever, coughing, and other symptoms. So that would allow folks to do that essentially on a drive-up basis. Our target for that is to get that up and running as early as late next week. We are still working on procuring the actual test kits, all of the other parts of the puzzle, the actual test analysis, the medical personnel to be able to do it, the site selection, all the materials necessary to stand up the item have been acquired. So we are well on our way, but still not quite there. We hope to have that up and running to the community as early as late next week, based on the availability of those test kits. With that, we are also taking care of our community partners who are providing for our most vulnerable in the community, our unsheltered, which, getting our shower program back up and running. As you may remember, that program, along with the laundry program, was shut down after volunteers were exposed to COVID-19. We, the city has hired an industrial hygienist that has developed new protocols to be able to be used in the shower areas and then ultimately extended to the laundry areas at the Asbury Methodist Church. That training will happen later this week, and we will have the shower and laundry program up and running late this week, as early as Wednesday of this week, we may be back up and running. And that timing of having the showers ultimately open on Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays will correspond to Open Heart Kitchen meal service and pickup at the Robert Livermore Community Center. That is being staffed with volunteers as well as LARPD staff and essentially city staff is also helping with that. Folks moved over from their normal daily routine to essentially help out with those activities. Meals on Wheels had a very large increase in signups early on in the disaster, had 34 new clients added just a week ago. The Wheels and Paratransit folks are now helping drive for Meals on Wheels, and the Rotarians locally are also volunteering. So they always look for volunteers, but at the moment, they are essentially able to provide those meals to seniors, as is their mission. Tri Valley Health Center is continuing to support Abode's homeless outreach on Mondays, providing physicians assistants and medical assistance to our homeless communities out in the camp environments. And we continue to work with our county partners on the identification and provision of hotel rooms for our most medically fragile, unsheltered folks, and we're coordinating with that. We have been providing 12 hotel rooms here locally to those who are older or have multiple medical conditions so that the weather would not worsen their condition during this particular time of the pandemic. Ultimately, those are the, the major issues that we have been working on going forward. Of course, the other big thrust is to communicate effectively with our community. You have directed your staff to increase the amount, type, and method of communication with the community. So are you using social media much more than we would in a traditional time, pushing out information from the county, the state, or federal government? And that ranges everything from how to stay safe to how to access state or federal programs for financial assistance and other things. We have facilitated your all letters going out to the community, the distribution of the individual letters that have been posted on social media from each of you. In addition to that, the city is in the final stages of mailing out a newsletter, which includes a lot of information, including excerpts from those letters, as well as other information related to what's going on in the city and essentially items related to the pandemic. Those should start arriving in mailboxes as early as very late this week or early next week. In addition to that, we worked with each Um, in addition to that, uh, we, uh, worked with each of you to create a video, um, which is, uh, housed on essentially in social media sites and on our website, um, uh, giving information out to, to the community. The last item that you had directed us to do was to continue to work, um, with our community partners, um, to come up with, uh, a workshop format, and we are finalizing that. Um, but we are identifying our community partners, um, that you all as the council would work with in, uh, coming up with, uh, workshops to, to give information out to the community. The kinds of topics that will be included is, uh, healthcare, um, and those would likely include, uh, panelists, uh, from our local healthcare providers, um, uh, items related to the school district and park district, where we'll have, um, folks from those particular districts, uh, giving you a hand, getting information out about their programs and how that's actually being, um, i- implemented at the current time. Um, another area is essentially what's going on economically in the community. Um, and we have a variety of partners there from the Chamber of Commerce to Livermore Downtown Incorporated to the wine growers and, uh, others, uh, county and state small business groups may ultimately be a part of that. Um, and then, uh, finally, essentially our nonprofits and our community partners, um, and working with all of those who are providing services to our most vulnerable. So those are the topic areas that we are working on as your staff, um, and we'll be coordinating with you as we begin to set those up, um, over the next, um, uh, week or so, uh, getting that piece of your communication strategy. With that, I wanted to, uh, move on to specifically, um, the orders that, uh, were, uh, that I have as your emergency services director, um, made during this time, um, during an emergency. Um, the, uh, emergency services director, uh, by local, uh, code and state law is, uh, permitted to both declare an emergency, um, which, uh, I did, uh, on March thirteenth, and the city council essentially approved a resolution confirming that declaration of emergency on March sixteenth. Um, essentially, since then, uh, there have been, uh, three additional orders which we are asking for your confirmation, uh, for tonight. The first essentially suspends and extends the time to hear appeals until the, uh, conclusion of the emergency. Um, and essentially what this does is it tolls the time. So if someone has appealed a, uh, city action or another item under your municipal code, um, there are timelines that those have to be processed in, and this essentially, uh, sets those aside, tolls those, uh, ultimately until, uh, the end of the local emergency, and then the clock would start again on that. The second of the order, uh, was establishing a temporary moratorium on the imposition of city of Livermore fines, penalties and interest imposed for failure to pay, uh, uh, the city's transit occupancy tax, business license tax, or to pay invoices from the city for water or sewer utility services as a result of loss of income related to COVID nineteen. This essentially allows people to not have a fine or penalty and to set up a payment program where they're ultimately able to repay, um, those obligations to the city, but over a longer period of time and at, uh, individual payments that, uh, can be tailored to their specific, uh, circumstances, um, based on the loss of income from COVID nineteen. Finally, um, i- is the first amended order, uh, dealing with the temporary moratorium on residential and commercial evictions. Um, you'll recall that essentially on the second of April, um, I, uh, ultimately, uh, made that, uh, order. Um, and then subsequent to that, I amended the order to make it conform with essentially subsequent actions that had been taken at the county and state level. So essentially, this particular order, um, prohibits people from, um, removing tenants, um, for non-payment, both commercial tenants, uh, and residential tenants. Um, it does not relieve the tenant of the ultimate obligation to, uh, pay for space that they are renting, um, but it does mean that during the interim period, uh, the eviction, um, is not permitted by the local order. Those three are the orders that, uh, I am asking you to confirm this evening, uh, as the city council. There has been a fourth order, uh, which I have made, uh, on the tenth of April, uh, dealing with essentially our public nuisance ordinances, um, and allowing that public nuisance process to be applied, um, for violations, uh, related to the COVID nineteen, um, uh, pandemic. Um, so currently, um, you, the only remedy is, uh, for someone to be charged with a misdemeanor if they violate the code. This would allow, um, the violation to be treated as an infraction, um, essentially like a ticket, um, or a citation. So it provides, uh, more tools that are more flexible, um, to ultimately, if we do ultimately after, uh, trying to get conformance through informing people of what the rules are and why the real rules are that way. If we can't get conformance, it gives us another tool, um, to encourage people to abide by the health orders that have been issued by the county or the state. That item will return, um, essentially item twenty dash four, uh, dealing with the, uh, public nuisances will return to you at your next council meeting on April twenty seventh. So the three items before you are the, uh, extending time for, uh, appeals, temporary moratorium on the, uh, fines, penalties and interest of, for city charges, um, and finally, the temporary moratorium on residential and commercial, um, evictions. With that, I'm available for questions.
Good. Thank you very much. Uh, are there any questions from the council?
Yeah, Mark, thanks very much for the very thorough report. I, Claudia mentioned to me a week or so ago that additional was, wash stations were being, uh, purchased, and I wondered what the status of that was.
Yes. Let me get to mine. So you are correct. Um, we, uh, have done a couple things. So the first is, uh, to have, uh, two, uh, wash stations and, uh, toilets to be, uh, out in the creek area, um, near the, uh, Walmart and Kohl's area. Um, and, uh, we have done both, uh, placing those, um, and then getting additional, uh, maintenance for those, uh, to keep those facilities both stocked, uh, and clean. Um, as you might imagine, they're heavily used, um, so that is a challenge. Um, but over the last few days, uh, that actually we've, uh, we've worked with both our, uh, vendor and with Block by Block to ensure that those, uh, are being stocked. We are still, uh, looking for two additional sites, um, and, uh, that is in process right now while we're, uh, working on that. So we have the ones out, uh, near the freeway. Um, we have, uh, another one near, uh, essentially the location of Stanley Boulevard. And I'm gonna ask Christine if she can give me the status of both those ones near Stanley Boulevard, um, and essentially the status of, uh, the, uh, the additional sites that we're considering.
Uh, yes, this is Christine, your deputy city manager. Mark, if you'll give me just a few minutes to scroll through a few emails for the very latest update on that, um, and return to me, that would be great.
Uh, Mark, I mean, Claudia said we are getting money from the, from the county to purchase these additional wash stations. Is that true?
That is correct. Yes, through one of their funding programs.
Okay, so we, that part is concluded, I guess, and it's just addition, uh, the issue of where to put them and to get to purchase them?
Yes, so the, so the two items that we're working on is their location and then making sure that we have the service and the staffing, um, because that has been a challenge, um, throughout the entire region, is, um, the folks who traditionally place these porta-potties. So we have the funding available for them. So the next step is to actually find the, the actual, uh, materials themselves, the porta-potties themselves, and as you might imagine, they're in very high demand right now, um, as a lot of folks are doing what we are doing here. And then the final step, uh, of the puzzle is to have them, um, serviced often enough and refilled with supplies often enough that they remain, uh, usable. Um, and that has been a major challenge as we've started the process. We believe we've made some major headway on that as we've moved through the problem solving between both the vendors that don't have enough bandwidth to do that and then backfilling them in our case with Block by Block staff.
Right. I didn't understand about the Stanley Boulevard. Where on Stanley Boulevard?
Essentially, uh, near the intersection with Marietta. So not too far from, in one case, uh, from the trail that runs along, um, essentially behind the convenience store at that intersection.
Got it. Yep, I know what you mean now. Okay, thanks. So what's, what's there? A wash station or a toilet and a wash station?
Uh, both, is I think what we're planning for, and if Christine can find my detailed data on that, uh, I can confirm that.
Okay.
I believe it, I, I believe it's just a wash station. Um, I am looking to confirm that. I'm still trying to find, and I do believe it was delivered last week, uh, but I am trying to find the actual confirmation of that information.
And so, uh, we're looking for yet another location beyond the Marietta and Stanley location?
There was one additional essentially, um, at the park area near where thirteen sixteen railroad, um, uh, and those, that was for an additional location for a hand-washing station. So, uh, yeah, the information I do have in front of me confirmed what Christine just said is that, uh, it's the, uh, wash station at that location, uh, on Stanley, and, uh, we're looking, uh, to provide an additional wash station, uh, near thirteen sixteen railroad, uh, on the city parcel there that's a little mini park.
Great, thank you.
I, I'll just follow up on that, uh, noting that this, this really brings home both the vulnerability of this population, but also, you know, the, the fact that sewage, having good sewage matters.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, uh, we've got three, uh, resolutions here. A question for the city attorney, should we handle those in a single motion or would you prefer three separate resolutions?
Mr. Mar, Mr. Marshon, Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason. You can handle these in one motion. If you were to move staff's recommendation, that would take care of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, is there a motion to, uh, move the three items?
To move that recommendation?
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Okay, move by council member Carling, second by council member Coomer. Uh, any discussion on that motion? All in favor say, oh, uh, roll call, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Weber?
Mayor, just so you're aware, uh, council member, Vice Mayor Warner is having some technical issues, so he is not currently on. He is actively trying to get back on.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there he is.
Yeah. So I'm, somehow I got in, but you don't see me anywhere. It looks like I'm coming in under Doug's. Uh, he sent me an email so I could get in.
Okay. We have two Doug's. But we'll do this by, uh, by, by roll call anyway, so, uh, that'll still work. So Ms. Weber?
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Aye.
Mayor Marshon?
Aye. All right. Well, very good. Thank you very much. We've got a lot of good work done tonight, and thank you for the, uh, the public comment. I certainly appreciate that as well. Uh, we're going to adjourn to a regular city council meeting on April twenty seventh at seven PM. This will also be a Zoom meeting, uh, and, uh, also streamed live over YouTube. So with that, uh, there'd be no further business. Uh, we'll see you at seven o'clock, regular meeting on April twenty seventh. Thank you very much. Be adjourned.